Please remain standing. Good evening, members, and for those watching on the YouTube livestream. Before we begin, it is with great sadness I am announcing tonight that Bill Samuel, our former chief executive, died last week. Bill served as our chief executive from 1991 to 1999, but he came to the council in 1989 as a planning officer from the Development Corporation, where he worked on the major expansion of Peterborough as a new town. Bill was a passionate, energetic and hard-working chief executive, and he was always committed to the success of the council and the city of Peterborough. He was a pragmatic man who was respected and valued by his staff, councillors and the community at all levels, and he had excellent political skills, navigating through the council through some very challenging times. Those skills came into play when he led with a cross-party group of councillors the bid for the council to become a unitary authority, which succeeded in 1998. Bill is survived by his dear wife Anne and his loving sons Thomas, Chris, James and Edward. I'm sure that she will join with me in sending our sincere and heartfelt condolences to Anne and his sons and to all of his family. Will members please stand and observe a minute's silence in tribute to Bill's legacy and in remembrance of him? Thank you, members. Please, can I introduce the Reverend Mike Elliott, who will be saying prayers this evening? We remember with thanksgiving the life of Bill and all who have served in this chamber this past year. For the mayor and deputy mayor, for their year of service, for their wives and families and for all who support the mayors in the civic office, we give you hearty thanks. In the spirit of St Ignatius reflecting on his sacrificial faith and as an encouragement to us all, teach me to be generous, to teach me to serve as you deserve, to give and not to count the cost, to fight and not to heal the wounds, to labour and not to seek to rest, to give of myself and not ask for a reward, accept the reward of knowing that I do your will. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Welcome everyone to this meeting of mayor-making. I will now hand over to Pippa Turvey as Democratic and Constitutional Services Manager to go through some housekeeping points for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you. Please ensure that all mobile phones are set to silent. The toilets are located on either side of the engine shed; public toilets are next to the reception. In the event of an evacuation, the emergency exits are situated on the end of the engine shed. Please ensure that you follow the council staff to evacuate the building. As per normal rules, if you wish to speak, please ensure that you raise your hand and you will be invited to address the meeting. All votes will be taken via a show of hands unless a recorded vote is requested, which will be taken in the normal way. As per the previous meetings and for new members this evening, you have laminated copies of four against and abstain on your tables. When we come to vote, please raise the correct coloured document to make the vote counting easier for the team. I will take each four against and abstain in turn. There is also a points of order document. If you wish to raise a point, please raise the pink document and address the mayor accordingly, stating which point you are raising. Finally, I would remind members that this meeting is being livestreamed, so please make sure that when you speak you are using your microphone. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Pippa. Agenda item number one, apologies. Do we have any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have received apologies from councillor Hemraj, Howell and Fenner.
Thank you. Agenda item two, I invite nominations for the appointment of mayor for the municipal year 2022-2023. Councillor Iqbal, I understand you have a nomination.
Yes, I'm happy to propose.
Who?
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm happy to propose councillor Dowson as the mayor of the city of Peterborough. Before I allow my proposal to be seconded, I would like to say the following. Councillor Dowson and his late wife Annie came to the city shortly after being married in 1968. Previously, he had been in the RAF and a mature student. Councillor Dowson worked as a lecturer at the Regional College, his late wife Annie in multicultural education. Both came from Middlesbrough, North Yorkshire. Councillor Dowson moved to the College of Adult Education, Brook Street, in 1975 as an adult education organiser. He left the college in 2000 to become an education consultant, retiring in 2016. Shortly after arriving in the city, councillor Dowson was elected to the council in 1971 as the Labour councillor for the City Centre Ward of Minster. Since then, he has been a councillor for several areas of the city. Now, he is the councillor for Flaton and Woodston. During this period, he has been involved in many heritage projects. As a member of the Civic Society, he was active in the saving of 16 historic buildings during the Queen's Gate development. Based on councillor Dowson's credentials, he would surely be an excellent mayor, and I would therefore request the entire chamber to support my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Iqbal. Councillor Shaznamaz, I understand you are going to second the nomination?
I do, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I echo and support everything councillor Iqbal has said. Councillor Dowson has served on the council, as councillor Iqbal said, for many, many years and started in 1971. What's really important, and I think this is most important for anybody who serves as mayor, is that councillor Dowson cares deeply about Peterborough and the people of Peterborough, and to be the first citizen, that's obviously extremely important. And every time I've spoken to councillor Dowson about being mayor, he's been extremely excited and has had a huge smile on his face. In fact, I think the only person I can think of who had a bigger smile on their face is the days when I used to go to Woolworths as a kid and choosing my pick and mix sweets. But other than that, I have no doubt that councillor Dowson will serve as an excellent mayor, and I wish him all the best, and he has the support of all the councillors. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Are there any other nominations? With no other nominations, I declare councillor Alan Dowson mayor of the city of Peterborough for the municipal year 2022 to 2023. Thank you. Please be seated. I'll sit down now and... Unfortunately, they took my jacket away in the robe room and my glasses are in them. Yeah.
It's fine, just wait. Anne's going to get them.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. No. I thought something like this would happen. Yeah. I know. I'm sorry about this. I apologise. Thank you. No, we won't. Okay.
I invite the mayor, councillor Alan Dowson, to make his declaration of acceptance of office.
I, Alan Dowson, having been elected mayor of the city of Peterborough, do hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the members' code of conduct in the performance of my duties in that office.
Yeah. Okay. Where am I next? This one? Okay, yeah.
I invite the retiring mayor, councillor Stephen Lane, to oversee the investment of the mayor with his chain of office. I now invite the retiring mayoress, Mrs Margaret Lane, to oversee the investment of the mayoress, councillor Sabina Quaymum, with her chain of office.
Agenda item three, election of the deputy mayor for 2223. I invite nominations for the appointment of deputy mayor for the municipal year 2223. Councillor Hogg, I understand you have a nomination.
I do, Mr Mayor. So, following on from a rich tradition of Liberal Democrat leader speeches, where the subject of trees are normally mentioned, there is an old Chinese proverb that says the best time to plant a tree was 20 years ago and the second best time is now. I'll part that up for now and return to it later. Please bear with me. So, I'm here to propose councillor Nick Stamford for the position of deputy mayor. Nick has been a Liberal Democrat, albeit initially a Liberal, for pretty much my whole life, having joined the Liberal Party just before my first birthday. We won't put any dates to that, but suffice to say it was quite some time ago. Nick was first elected to Walton Ward in 1996 and subsequently to the Pasman and Walton Ward when the boundaries were changed. Nick has been a PECT board member for many years. Although now recently retired, he still remains as a company member. Along with his employment with the Woodland Trust, Nick is a strong advocate for trees and improving our environment. Returning briefly to his employment with the Woodland Trust, Nick is due to retire this year in June, which is why he is now felt able to take on the responsibilities of the role of deputy mayor. Unlike some involved in politics, Nick has a number of interests outside of politics. As mentioned previously, he's a keen environmentalist. He's also an avid follower of various sports, cricket, tennis, football and many more. Specifically, he is a keen supporter of Peterborough's second football team, Peterborough Sports, who have had a meteoric rise through the various leagues, something Nick is keen to celebrate far and wide. He's also a regular worshipper at Breton's Church of the Holy Spirit. Nick will be assisted by Alderman Bella Saltmarsh, who, as I'm sure you will know, was a long-serving councillor and previously deputy mayor herself in 2010 to 2011. I'm sure that together they will conduct their duties with aplomb. So, back to the Chinese proverb. 26 years ago, Nick was planted as a councillor in Walton Ward, and now we can plant him in the position of deputy mayor, where his knowledge and experience can extend to the whole city. I hope all those present can support this nomination and vote Nick for deputy mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for your nomination. Councillor Daye, will you second this nomination?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm delighted to second councillor Sanford for deputy mayor. I've gotten to know councillor Nick Sanford really well, mostly from the work we have achieved on the Cross-Party Climate Change Working Group. Councillor Sanford has always been an advocate for green-leaning policies and has played an instrumental role in creating an ambitious vision for a tree planting strategy and target for the city. This was aided by Nick's incredible expertise and experience. He has worked for the Woodland Trust for 29 years in public affairs, liaising with local authorities on policy issues relating to trees and woodlands. He was perfectly placed to assist the group on best practice in terms of tree planting policy. He has also become a great adviser on constitutional issues and has a fantastic knowledge to share, not only about what we do here in Peterborough but in other councils across the UK. Nick also has many interesting stories to tell, based on his vast experience as a councillor. He has recently pushed for the Cross-Party Working Group on Climate Change to be merged into one of the council's scrutiny committees, a formidable achievement which we support. I'm delighted to second councillor Nick Sanford for deputy mayor.
Are there any other nominations? With no other nominations, I declare councillor Nick Stamford deputy mayor of the city of Peterborough for the municipal year 2223. Would councillor Sanford please like to come forward?
This is...
I invite the Deputy Mayor, councillor Nick Sanford, to make his declaration of acceptance of office.
I, James Nicholas Sanford, having been elected Deputy Mayor for the City of Peterborough, do hereby declare that I will take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof, according to the best of my judgment and ability. I undertake to be guided by the members' code of conduct in the performance of my duties in that office.
I invite the Mayor, councillor Alan Dowson, to oversee the investment of Deputy Mayor, councillor Nick Sanford, with their chain of office. I now invite the Mayor, councillor Alan Dowson, to oversee the investment of the Deputy Mayoress, Bella Saltmarsh, with their chain of office.
Where are we up to here? Councillor Burch Gerald, I understand that you wish to move a vote of thanks to the retiring Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It gives me great pleasure to call you that this year as well. So, congratulations to you. It does fall to me to give thanks to our retiring Mayor. It says councillor Stephen Lane here, but I think I'm entitled to call him Steve because I think we're friends. And Steve has embraced all aspects of the role, which is one of the great things I get to do at this time of year, is do this and I always enjoy doing it. But Steve, you've done it with commitment and spirit. You've been a fine ambassador also for your three charities, The Light Project, Family Voice and Supporting Peterborough Veterans. The first few months of Steve's role coincided with COVID-19 and the restrictions therein, meaning he wasn't able to attend as many of the community events and special occasions as he would have liked, of course. However, he has still been able to get out and about, meet many people during the past year, bringing great joy to everyone he encountered. I know Steve would want me to acknowledge those who helped him and I would give particular mention to his wife, Margaret, otherwise again known as Maggie, who I also call a friend, who supported him superbly and been at his side all the time, with great enthusiasm and a lot of hard work. Also, grateful thanks go to Mohammed Jamil and Sukra Jamil, who together have been incredible as the Deputy Mayor and Mayoress in this council as well. Steve, as you sit amongst us again this evening, I want to say on behalf of us all, that's the council, not just this side, and I'm sure others will have words to say, that you chaired our council meetings fairly and firmly throughout your tenure. You've kept us in order, more so with many of us than needed to be sometimes, but I thank you for your integrity and your considerable contribution you've made as our Mayor in the last year. Thank you, Stephen Lane.
Councillor Steve Allen, I understand that you wish to make contribution here and second.
Indeed, Mr Mayor, and I'm delighted to second, from one Steve to another, or one Stephen who's known as Steve to another, I'd like to commend the outgoing Mayor on a fantastic year. Strident work in the prevailing headwind of COVID, which was there at the start of your period of tenure. I attended many events with you during the year, Steve, and I thought that you carried it off extremely well, as well as chairing the council meetings, so I'm happy to second. Thank you.
Thank you. I call upon each of the group leaders now. Councillor Chas Lewis.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations for being installed as the Civic Mayor for this year. Councillor Lane, in many ways, has been an excellent Mayor. He took over as Mayor in difficult circumstances, as has been mentioned by the Leader and Deputy Leader with COVID. And of course, it's no secret that his health has been a challenge. But what I've been most impressed with is councillor Lane never, ever complained. Always took the role very seriously, as one should, and he always put duty before himself. And although it's been difficult for him, and we were speaking earlier, and for the first seven or eight months, he wasn't able to go out and about because of COVID, despite that, he's raised a significant amount of money. And as Wayne said earlier, thanks goes to all the people who supported him, especially Margaret, because I know it can be a lonely journey and support is very important. And one thing that, above all for me, that councillor Lane did is he made sure that our meetings were run properly and professionally. And that's incredibly important. And as Wayne said, councillor Lane was firm but fair. And I'm sure, Mr Mayor, you're going to continue in the same vein. I also want to thank Mr and Mrs Jamil. They've done a fantastic job as Deputy Mayor and Deputy Mayoress. And I'm sure Mr Mayor, or the outgoing Mr Mayor, has appreciated their support through the year. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Hogg?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations on becoming Mayor. So, I have to say, I'll keep this brief. Sorry, just a personal joke between me and Mr Mayor. I can only really reinforce what has already been said. Councillor Lane was a good, safe pair of hands in the mayoral position. And I will hope to be witnessing the same from our new Mayor. And I think as a team, I think they work very closely together to the betterment of the city. As said already by the Leader, councillor Lane took short shrift when people went past the rules. And I think I got the sharp end of his tongue maybe once or twice in this chamber. But no hard feelings on that one. It's all learning. So, thank you very much for your time as Mayor. And I will end with that. Thank you.
You kept it brief as well. Councillor Harbour?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations in your new role. Apart from chairing full council, it's important to remember that we all remember what the Mayor and his deputy or her deputy offers. He or she works to cement our city's relationship with our neighbouring authorities, other councils throughout the UK and sometimes other countries too. He or she represents our city in celebrating great occasions or personal achievements, as well as leading, as we remember our fallen and those that continue to suffer having given their service to our country. Sometimes though, it's the small things that the Mayor does that really matters. Turning up to a small community responsible for raising money at an afternoon tea. That's the highlight of their lives and shouldn't be forgotten, how powerful the Mayor can be. Stephen and Mohammed and those that supported you, on behalf of our city, we thank you sincerely for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Day?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and congratulations to you. The Greens endorse everything other leaders have already said tonight. We really appreciate the hard work of the retiring Mayor, Stephen Lane, and the Mayoress, Margaret Lane, of putting in when representing our city and their tremendous efforts in raising vital funding for Family Voice, SPV and The Light Project. I was delighted to attend the Mayor's finale ball this year, the first Mayor's Ball that I've ever attended, where I got the chance to chat to Steve about his career and life. We want to offer a huge thanks to all you have achieved for this city and the funds you have raised for charity. Many thanks from the Greens also go to Mr and Mrs Jamil in their supporting role as Deputy Mayor and Mayoress. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add my thanks to the outgoing Mayor and wish him a successful year. I have a short speech given to me earlier on today, but the sentiments are truly felt by myself for you. It falls to me to give a thanks to our retiring Mayor, councillor Stephen Lane. Stephen has embraced all the aspects of his role with great commitment and spirit, and he has been a fine ambassador for his three charities, The Light Project, Family Voice and Supporting Peterborough Veterans, which I am one, with my rough service, as you find out. The first few months of Stephen's role coincided with COVID-19 restrictions, meaning that he wasn't able to attend as many of the community events and special occasions as he would have liked. However, he has still been able to get out and meet many people during the past year, bringing great joy to everyone he encountered. I know Stephen would want me to acknowledge that those who helped him, and I would give particular mention to his wife, Margaret, who has supported him superbly with great enthusiasm, kept us in order, and we thank you for this and considerable contribution you have made to our city. Thank you very much. Is the vote of thanks agreed? Councillor Lane, would you occur to respond?
Indeed, I do, thank you, Mr Mayor. And I wish to thank everybody for their kind sentiments, which I accept with humble gratitude. It has been a huge privilege and honour to serve the City of Peterborough the past year. Firstly, I must extend my thanks to a number of people that helped the year in office. As any Mayor will tell you, we cannot do without our civic office. To Sue, Rachel, Ian and retiree Gary, my heartfelt thanks for your guidance and help with all the procedures and expectation this role demands. And I must not forget the invaluable support from Fiona, who sat by my side through each council meeting to assist with its smooth running. Ashley Stedman, the Mayor's cadet. He fulfilled his duties with dignity and perfection and I wish him good luck for all his future may bring. The Reverend Mike Elliott, my chaplain. He led with prayers and I know that many of you have met him and enjoyed his charm and easy wit. I believe he is the embodiment of this particular role and extend to him my gratitude and kindest wishes. Councillor Jamil, it's been a pleasure to have you by my side as Deputy Mayor and I hope that you have enjoyed the year as best as we could in the circumstances. Please accept our thanks from myself and my wife and best wishes to both you and your wife, Deputy Mayoress Sukra. Now, every Mayor must have a Mayoress, and that's a given, because apart from straightening my tie, checking behind my ears and other things, Margaret or Maggie has been such a powerhouse when it comes to social events. She has fully enjoyed meeting and mixing with everyone at our events and I know she will cherish her memories of the occasion. And I've enjoyed working with the three special charities of mine. I hope the funds we've raised will go a little way to help each of your causes. Now, because of the restrictions with socialising, we got off to a slow start with fundraising, but picked up the pace after Christmas. We held two curry evenings at Maharini's and Ibrahim's restaurants and quiz and chips at the Plougham and Public House, assisted by the Golden Cod Warrington. The farewell ball raised approximately 3,690 from the auction and raffle, but a final figure will not be available before next week. But our sincere thanks to everyone who made a donation throughout the year. And my final thanks must now go to all group leaders and members of this chamber, past and present. You offered me the respect disposed demands and each of our meetings ran fairly well. As members, we don't always agree, nor should we, because it is in debating our differences that we represent our city as the tough decisions are made. But I am in no doubt that you're all here because you want to make a difference. I also hope that the good grace and humour with which we usually treat each other can continue. Our common passion for the city, putting city before politics, is what should unite us. So finally, Mr Mayor, thank you for your indulgence and your time. I wish you all the success the coming year can bring. And you are especially fortunate because I hear that we shall soon be returned to the council chamber proper. I have missed that place. And that your term as Mayor also coincides with the Majesty of the Queen's due year. Please, Mr Mayor, enjoy that occasion with our communities and many others that will emerge as the year progresses. I hope you have a successful and happy year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lane. I would now like you to come forward to collect your past Mayor's badges in recognition of your service to the city during this term of office. I can present.
Please could the retiring Mayoress, Margaret Lane, come to the front to receive her gift?
Please, could the retiring mayoress, Margaret Lane, come to the front to receive her gift? Please, could the retiring deputy mayor, councillor Jamil, come to the front to receive his gift? Hold on, hold on. Councillor Jamil won't wait. Please, could the retiring deputy mayoress, Mrs Sukra Jamil, come to the front to receive her gift?
I've thought a lot about this speech. It's kept me up at night, as only other mayors can understand that. And I've had apprehensions about it. When I was a young man, which is many years ago, I'm afraid, I was in the air force and I was ordered to witness two atomic bombs and two hydrogen bombs. And I was a bit apprehensive about this. And being volunteering to be mayor, I've been apprehensive far more than I ever was watching hydrogen bombs go. So I'm grateful that I'm finishing this part of the service soon. Thank you very much. Next month, we will have the Jubilee celebrations, a happy event in many people's lives. However, during the next 12 months, a number of our fellow citizens will be facing what Charles Dickens called hard times. Whilst I acknowledge that the role of mayor is largely ceremonial, I feel that there is a need to show some degree of the council's concern for the hardship which our people will be facing. One small way, I believe, to do this is to change the way that the mayors' charities are delivered. Rather than raising funds throughout the year, concluding with a cheque presentation to the chosen charities, I will use the mayor's allowance, starting in June, to help local self-help schemes and projects in their aim to alleviate some of the hardships faced by our people. For example, the promotion of the good work of Green Backyard, the self-help repair cafes which are slowly developing in the town, the parish council's aim to provide a minivan for use by the disabled and elderly in the villages through the Good Neighbour scheme and the food and clothing banks which are being established in the town. Lastly, loneliness and isolation in people in our city needs to be tackled by greater community involvement provision. Donations will be welcome throughout the year and I'm very impressed that you managed to raise £3,600 from the ball. I did go into the mayor's office and offered to buy a ticket. After councillor Day bought the last one and it was declined. They said no more tickets were available. So I did support your scheme as far as possible. It is an ambitious programme, but one I hope will benefit a number of our citizens during this time of need. I will share this endeavour with my mayoral team, the deputy mayor, councillor Nick Sanford, the mayors, Sabina Kezum, the deputy mayors, Bella Saltmarsh. My mayor's chaplain will be Linda Elliot, who is not the partner of the past chaplain, despite a lot of people saying. And my mayor's cadet will be Matthew Simpson of the Air Guitar Squadron. Thank you very much. I thank you. And that concludes the ceremony part of the proceedings for this evening. The annual council meeting will commence in 15 minutes' time. Thank you.